Minutes of July 15.
I have no objections.
John, any corrections?
I don't have any objections.
Could I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. I'll second that motion.
All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Closed. Very good. A moment of personal privilege, we have our teen interns with us tonight, and we want to take a moment to acknowledge and to thank them, and I want to turn the meeting over to Robert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hinkin. Members of the library board, we're pleased to have two of our teen interns who helped us this summer, and I'd like to give some background before I call them up. First, I'd like to invite Jamie Lee Beck, the Assistant Director, to come up, and Jackie Seacamp, our Youth Services Librarian, as they played significant roles in the Summer Lunch Program. So by way of follow-up and background, some of these you may already know, but I'll review it anyway. Palmdale City Library has been involved with the Summer Lunch Program the last two years prior to this year. This year because of COVID, we all knew that it would be different if the Summer Lunch Program would go on at all. Palmdale School District continued to serve meals in a grab-and-go format and venue at 10, and then it was reduced to nine sites across the city. And of course, they carried the huge amount of work preparing those meals. We wanted to do something, weren't sure what we could do. Thankfully, the State Library of California already had funds allocated, federal money that the State Library manages, that they were still able to offer some grant funds for libraries that could muster some sort of a Summer Lunch outreach program. It took some going back and forth to figure out what we could do, but ultimately, later than we would have liked, but in the month of July, we were able to get grant funding approved, and as part of the grant program was what is an aspect of the grant program called youth development. And that is a segment of this grant program that allows for libraries and encourages libraries to hire local youth on a part-time basis to give them work experience in a library setting. Very purposely and straightforward, it is because libraries are seen as a positive place to work, and we like to think that most of the time. And so in that spirit, working with the city, we were, once we had the grant approved, that included some funding for teen interns, as they're called. So technically, they are not volunteers, per se, because they are paid. However, they didn't have to do this. So with the Parks and Rec Department help, members of their staff, we actually interviewed, we three interviewed 10 teens whom the city had already identified as possible program leaders, I believe they're called, in Parks and Rec. However, they weren't able to do anything yet because of COVID, but we were able to interview 10 of those. We were impressed with all 10. We really wanted to hire all 10. As it came, when it came down to it, we could only hire four at 10 hours per week, and so that is what we ended up doing. So that is the background of the program. There were four, two of them are here tonight. Before we introduce them to you, I'd like to invite, now Jackie, as our Youth Services Librarian, became their immediate supervisor, slave driver, whatever you want to call her. She was the main lead of the program. Jamie Lee definitely helped out a great deal, and Jamie Lee would supervise when Jackie wasn't there. I'd like to give them a moment if they would like to. You don't have to, but if they would like to comment on the program, and then I'll continue after that.
Yes, I specifically wanted to thank the two young ladies who are here tonight and also the two who are not, because they did a lot of thankless work. It was a lot of repetitive things that were, and they're incredibly intelligent, hard-working young ladies, and they could have done more, but it was such an important part of the program. We created these kits, and we handed out, and they made endless, endless kits. They can tell you, I think, thousands of them, actually. And we handed out every single one of them. They went to the sites with one of our staff members, Ricardo, and they handed out the kits, and one week we had also books, and they handed it out to the community. The community was so excited, they were sharing it on Facebook and saying, "Come down, the library's handing out books." And these young ladies served as really amazing ambassadors for the library, you know, it was a great outreach. There was a write-up in the newspaper with Catherine here, it was on her day. And they worked very, very hard, and I'm really appreciative, because without them, we couldn't have done this program, which is such a great part of the community for the underserved population.
Thank you, Jackie.
Jamie Lee, you want to say anything?
Uh, no. I think I'm like, no, she pretty much said it all.
All right, we'll hear from Jamie Lee another day, another time. Thank you, Jackie, appreciate those comments. At this point, I would like to invite both of you to come forward, Catherine and Isla, and just find some space, not too close, of course. Before I give them a chance to speak, I would like to give you trustees, if you would like to make any comments to them, I will give them a chance to say something if they'd like to.
I just wanted to quickly just say thank you to you guys. I, last meeting, had asked for you guys to attend. I'm sorry if I'm wasting your time, but I just wanted to thank you and honor you, because the work you're doing truly affects the community. I'm a teacher outside of this role, and just the importance of literacy for our kids and the importance of access is so hugely important. So you guys are a part of that important work, and I just can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart for volunteering your time and being there for our kids. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you guys as well. As you guys know, because you did all this hard work, we have a lot of need in our community, and in times like this, those are the people who suffer the most. They don't have transportation, they don't have resources, and what you guys did made it possible for a lot of people who normally would do without to have things that they normally wouldn't have. And that's just, one of the things I've been amazed with is how well Palmdale has been serving our local community in this crisis, and how much people have stepped up, and this is a perfect example of it. So thank you very much for the work that you did.
Well, I would like to congratulate you in addition to thanking you. You saw the program through from the beginning to the end, and that's quite an accomplishment. I hope along the way, you learned a great deal about a number of things, but not the least of which is working in a library. And perhaps you'd consider a career in library science as you go forward. Trustee Manning or Trustee Morris?
Basically, yes, thank you for all that you do. And I would like to know, in your travels and working in this program, Palmdale actually has some hearings going on with regard to giving input to what the city would look like in the coming years. I was wondering if you ladies maybe came up with any ideas or anything that you might want to, like, add to the Palmdale hearings?
But we're under, we're doing our general plan, is what she was talking about, so.
Do you live in, do you live in the city? Okay, well, what's happening is Palmdale is coming up with a general plan, and they're getting input from, like, all the community, because we want, we're trying to design what our city is to look like in, to the future, and now is the time that they want input, so we could start putting things in place and moving forward toward that. And just, I was just hoping that maybe having an opportunity to, like, actually work in the community, because I'm sure you actually got a chance to, like, meet people who actually live in the city, use the library, maybe if they expressed any possible needs or anything, or ways that we might be able to help further, or how we can enhance our program. Think about it.
Well, you know, there's another way, I was thinking, Dolores, that they could do that, is that online, there's the Palmdale, the general plan, we, there's a survey online, you can find it quite easily, and what we're lacking a lot of, because I'm on that committee too, we're lacking a lot of voices of young people, and you guys have a different vision than somebody like me. I was born in 1952. So people, people of your age, that's who we need to hear from, because we're setting this plan for, you know, decades, and so we kind of want to go in a direction where you, your generation would like to go. So encourage your friends, that's one thing you can do, to fill out that survey online.
Thank you. Trustee Manning, do you want?
Nobody needs to be told that our country right now is undergoing a great deal of changes, and it's your generation really that's going to carry the torch. My generation is past. We're just about past. What I am concerned... You ain't that far behind, baby. And anyway, true change will come from working as you, young people are, and that's inside, within the system, including changing the system, which has to be done by every generation. There's nothing unique about this, but working on the inside diligently, intelligently, and firmly is the way change occurs. It doesn't occur by what you're seeing happen in the cities of Portland and in Seattle and Chicago, et cetera. That's very disruptive, but it really doesn't change anything. Gets people pissed off, but that's not the way you're going to get change, is young people like you working within the system. Things have to be funded, minds have to be educated, not necessarily changed, but educated, and that's going to take a generation to do it, and it's your generation that does it. I'm glad to see you're starting it. Good luck to you, and thanks for doing it.
Thank you. Robert, please.
Well, Isla and Catherine, that's what you get for getting involved with the library. You're going to get fortunate, and you're involved. So before we present the certificates themselves, Isla, is there anything you'd like to say? You don't have to, but...
I guess I would say pretty much thank you.
On the microphone.
Pretty much thank you. I'm the second-year college student at UC Santa Barbara. I'm studying, like, political science. I really want to be, like, directly changing, like, impacted, sorry, our community, and I think this is, like, a good way for me to be exposed, but like, indirectly or directly, just like, even a simple way of, like, giving out books. I mean, that, there are so many little kits, like, that we're so happy to receive a book or a meal, so thank you for, like, the experience and everything.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Do, Isla.
Would you like a chance?
Hi, I'm Catherine. I'm a first-year student at CSUN, and I'm majoring in criminology. I want to be in criminal justice, DEA, or FBI. So I just wanted to thank all of you to give, for giving us this experience, because we did learn a lot of stuff, and I don't know, I volunteer a lot, but just, it made me smile seeing the kids so happy. They were like, eh, working and making all these bags is worth it. Like, I got paper cuts, and I was like, you know, it's fine. I was like, it's, it's fine, it's fine. I got paper cuts. And then when I saw the kids, and they were really happy, and they were like, oh my God, we got books, and I was just like, it was all worth it. And of course, we got to meet new people, which is great, and also we got to, like, have the experience of this and learn new stuff.
Great. Thank you, Catherine.
All right, I guess political science and FBI compared to library, I don't know. Don't give up on library. That's awesome. And I just want to, I'm going to give a little more detailed report later about the Summer Lunch Program, but I will say this. I've been, I've been doing this for a while, working in libraries, and I've been blessed with many rewarding experiences. This version of the Summer Lunch Program is definitely the top five, as far as... I get emotional too, because, because we have a chance to connect with people at the grassroots level, and to see the smiling faces and the excitement at receiving these activity kits and some free books. And one mom, where I was at one of the schools, she grabbed a book that had a picture of a dog on it, and from her car, and said, "This one's for me." It was just very rewarding. I'm glad I got to be a part of it. We couldn't have done without these teenagers. So, without further ado, I will read what the certificates, one of the certificates, they all say the same. The other two who are not here, I'm going to read some statements that they sent to me by email. But first, no, actually, I'll read those now, and then we'll get to the certificates. Allison Frias was one of our teen interns, and in response to my invitation, she said, "Unfortunately, I will be out of town next week and cannot attend the meeting. However, thank you for the invitation," exclamation point. "Although it was a short time, I genuinely enjoyed working with you all at the library. Please let me know if you have any other similar opportunities or openings in the future," so we can do that. And then Ariana Garcia said, "Hi, Robert, it's Ariana Garcia, library intern from the Summer Lunch Program. Unfortunately, because of my current job, I'm unable to attend the board meeting. Thank you so much for the invitation and for the opportunity of letting me participate in the Summer Lunch Program. It has opened the door to so many more opportunities, and for that, I'm forever thankful for the time and experiences I had at the library. I wish you and the rest of the library staff the best. Thank you." Now, I'm curious what kind of other opportunities she's having, but I may follow up on that. So, without further ado, this one is to, so I'm going to invite you to come up one at a time. I've asked Erin if she would use the iPad to take some pictures, so I invite Jamie Lee and Jackie to join in here, and if any of you would like to come down, be a part of the picture, that's your choice. I can't get too close, but... If you don't mind coming over a little closer, yeah, as close as you're comfortable. So this is what the certificate says.
Oh, you're bloated.
This certificate is presented to, and then the name of the recipient. In recognition of your efforts in organizing and promoting the Palmdale City Library Team's Summer Lunch Program 2020, the City of Palmdale Library Board of Trustees is pleased to extend this expression of our appreciation to you for your dedication to our community. Presented this length date of August 2020. I sign it, and each of your names as trustees is at the bottom of the certificate. So that's what it says, little gift card here too. Isla, you want to come up? You know, we give a certificate. And let her take a picture. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You see my smile?
You're going to get special masks.
Yeah.
He's not a part of our marketing team.
Make sure you invite it.
Well, just take several. I'm not going to.
Okay.
I'm not going to be the fall of control right now. Just take several.
Shut them out. I think you can just hold down the money, and it'll take like 20.
Great. Thank you, Isla, thank you. We will send you, we'll send you those pictures. Okay, Catherine, do you want to come on up? Yours says the same thing, so I'm not going to read it again. I promise it says the same, except your name instead of his. Okay, so with that... Catherine's a pro of this, and she was in the newspaper the other day. So again, thank you very much, Isla, Catherine, appreciate you being here. I told them they could leave after this if they want. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, thank you for that point of personal privilege, and I turn it back to you.
Very good. Thank you. That was, that was fun. What great young people.
And here's to come when these young women show their children and grandchildren these pictures in an old scrapbook they find in the attic, they're going to laugh at how dated it is with everybody in a mask.
All right, moving on to the agenda, public comments on agenda items. Any public comments? Nope. Public comments from the...
No public comments.
I'm sorry?
No public comments.
Oh, yes, Grace has tuned in over the phone, and she's looking for any public comments.
Hi, Grace.
Oh, okay, very good. Thank you for that explanation.
The man behind the green curtain?
All right, and public comments from the floor? Hearing none, no public comments from the floor. We're going to consider Resolution LB 20-10.
I motion to approve.
Who is that?
Uh, me.
Caitlin?
Trustee.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Resolution LB 20-10.
I second it.
Is there a second?
Do. Morris.
Okay, Trustee Morris. Trustee Morris, this is a roll call vote, correct? Yeah, okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Trustee David?
Aye.
Trustee Rytuski Hein?
Aye.
Trustee Manning?
Aye.
Okay, and Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Okay, and aye, from me as well. All right, you recall that at our last meeting, we requested some homework on the part of the city staff as to what were the scope of the responsibilities and duties of us on the board, and that has happened. Who's doing the report? Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Carrie Smith, the Recreation Director here for the City of Palmdale, and the library has been under my purview for the last few years, and it's been a pleasure to work with you all. Yes, I got a little homework assignment last meeting, and you did receive some information in your packet. I reserve the right to allow Robert to come up and add some additional information as we go along, and to help provide some clarity if needed. But to just kind of get started, I thought I would just kind of walk through, in general terms, the information that was given to you in your packet, and then we can certainly dive into any additional questions that you might have from there. So, yes, the question was, you know, wanting to get some additional information with regard to the role of the library trustees. To provide some insight to that question, we provided a couple of bits of information, one of them being the roles and, I'm sorry, the duties and responsibilities summary that's attached to the packet that's submitted when you, when you apply to be a library board of trustees. That document is generated internally. There's nothing official, per se, about it, but it does summarize what we believe to be the role of the board from the library operations perspective. Some of those points of emphasis included assessing and evaluating current and long-need library plans, adopting policies, rules, and regulations with respect to programs, facilities to meet the needs of the community, monitoring the library's effectiveness, and being an advocate for the library, advising the library director on services. And then we'd also attach the applicable codes of the Palmdale Municipal Code. And the Municipal Code is very brief, but it does, under the library board trustees' powers and duties, it refers to the California Education Code, which is Sections 18910 through 18927. I'll point out that the Education Code, that particular chapter, there's several different articles within that chapter, but this is the only section of the California Code that the Palmdale Municipal Code recognizes, if that makes sense. So it's a much larger document, but that's the only section that the Palmdale Municipal Code calls out. In addition, we included the Resolution Number 2002-04, which was adopted by the library board and indicates the rules of order for conducting meetings, so we thought that that might be helpful as well. On the second page of the staff report, the paragraph on page two, with regard to library funding, I really felt like that was kind of an important point, and how the library is funded kind of affects the, how the California Education Code can be implemented. So while the duties, while the trustee duties are clearly stated in the California Education Code, the code is written with the understanding that the board is an independent entity with full and independent control of library operational funding. There is a code in the, in the, in the Education Code that does address funding, and it specifically talks about the establishment of a library fund, and how the library fund would pay for library expenses. However, in our scenario, it's the city's general fund that pays for the library. So that's why we picked out bits and pieces of the code, but we can't really full- So that's why we picked out bits and pieces of the code, but we can't really fully implement it because you're not a separate entity with your own funding, if that makes sense. So really, we're trying to...
Excuse me, Carrie.
Yes, sir.
So then our funding comes out of the general fund of the City of Palmdale.
Yes.
Which is controlled ultimately by the board of directors, I mean, by the city council.
City Council, yes.
And it's a statement here that says, "The California Education Codes are not referenced as governing codes by Palmdale City Library." In other words, Palmdale's city can override the education code. Is that my interpretation of this?
Where are you reading that, sir?
In the, on the library funding rule, on about the sixth sentence now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Yes, so according to the Palmdale Municipal Code, these sections of the California Education Code are not referenced as governing codes. What I'm referring to is sections 18951 through 19853 with regard to funding. There is an Article 3 that talks about funding only, and that piece is not addressed in the Palmdale Municipal Code. The only piece of the California Education Code that's addressed is the trustee duties, not the funding mechanism.
Okay. So then getting back, the City of Palmdale has the ultimate authority?
So, yes, ultimately, yes, because it's the city council that allocates the funding. So Palmdale's library is different, and that's the city's general fund allocates money and is adopted by the city council. So while the workflow, while we work to follow trustee duties listed in the California Education Code, our board lacks the library fund or independent control of library funding to independently execute duties in the Education Code. So you serve more as of an advisory role, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, one more thing for clarification. Now, the funding which you just described so nicely, that funding, does that go directly to the library, to Robert specifically, or does that go to the, what's your company, Library Services?
The Parks and Recreation Department?
No, no. What's the company that actually hires Robert?
Oh, LSNS.
Is it called Library Services?
LSNS is the company that Robert works for, yes.
So does that funding go to that company or directly to Robert's use?
The money, this general fund monies is placed in a budget for the city to spend. So we write a check to LSNS, and they in turn pay their employees and purchase books.
So we write a check, let's say, I don't know, $5,000, just take a figure. That check is written to that company?
Yes.
Not to Robert as director of library. I want to be clear on that one.
That's correct.
Okay?
Okay. So anyway, attached is the trustee duties and responsibilities from your packet. We've already kind of gone through that. Our brief little municipal code talks about the powers and duties, and it references just one little section of the Education Code. If you look at the Education Code that the City of Palmdale's Municipal Code recognizes, it really is general information, right? It talks about the years that you'll hold office, how we're going to fill vacancies, how often you're going to meet, all of those kinds of things. On the second page, it gives a little more meat to the bone, but however, you'll notice a lot of those functions, it says "may." So the library board of trustees may make and enforce rules, may administer a trust declared, may prescribe duties and powers of the librarian. So let's look at that one for a moment. Not only does this say "may" and not "shall," I think that gives some interpretation, some opportunity for interpretation, right? Because not every city, not every library can fully function under this chapter, right? So certainly, the library board doesn't decide Robert's salary, and so while we do try and follow it, we can't follow it to a T, and that's why there's a lot of those "may's" in there to provide us some flexibility, if that makes sense. And I also noticed in looking at these roles from the California Education Code, they seem to be very kind of business and operations focused, right? You're going to purchase books, you're going to approve rules, you're going to set salaries, those kinds of things. It really doesn't get into the programmatic role. That's where we rely on the expertise of our library director and the feedback and advice from the board as we make programming decisions that are blessed by staff and the city council and funded. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So with that, I think I will just open it up for questions. Does that kind of address some of your questions from last meeting?
I didn't have any questions. I have my handbook that was provided to me upon appointment, and I've thoroughly read it. And before the discussion on the agenda items, I made sure to consult everything to make sure I was within my rights as a board member to bring up the topics that were on the agenda as advisory, as discussion, not policy voting. So I think the only person that really wanted that done was Trustee Manning.
Are there any questions for me?
One other thing is, is all basically we are subject to the Brown Act.
Of course.
Which is significant.
Of course. Yes. And I did include the rules of order also in your packet, and I know that was a question that has come up as section 1.6 on page 2 with regard to agendas, and it does say that the board functions in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act and may not take action on any item that's not on a posted agenda. The president may rearrange items appearing on the agenda, and any trustee may place an item on a future agenda by making a request to the director.
And also, members of the board, these are words here, are appointed by a mayor with approval of the city council.
That is correct. However, while they're appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council, they don't serve necessarily at the whims of a particular person on the council. Once you're set on the board, then you're to serve as an advisory role and represent the city as a whole and not a particular council person. Right? And you're there to serve your full term.
The city council and the mayor ultimately have the authority to remove or replace anybody they wish at any time.
I don't believe so. You're, once you're on the board, you're appointed, and you're there to serve your full three-year term. And certainly, there could be some odd circumstances, but ordinarily, no. There wouldn't be any reason to just remove someone from a board for a discrepancy or disagreement in policy or those kinds of things.
There are instances, and there's been on the planning commission on both cities, in which they have been removed for various things, but the authority ultimately, it's not used very often and shouldn't be, I grant you that one, but they do have the ultimate authority to do that because they are appointed. It is not an election when they are appointed.
Right. Well, I would say it would probably be a very narrow number of opportunities or circumstances in which that could occur.
I agree.
Carrie, many thanks for preparing this. Really appreciate it. You did a lot of work. Can I ask how you went about preparing it? Did you run it past the city attorney?
Yes, spoke with the city attorney on a couple of occasions. The city manager is aware, the assistant city manager is aware, and we're all on the same page, Robert and I have had some discussions as well, so I think we're all on the same page. I understand that it is a little confusing, being that we're not able to follow the code specifically, but I think we've done a good job of interacting with the board and using your advice to help guide our decisions, and look forward to continuing that relationship with you.
Thank you for doing that extra work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks to you, and I assume Eric had a hand with some things also for doing that.
He got to go on vacation this week, so you'll see him next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. The director's report. There are no more questions. Robert?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I've prepared my report, and I don't like to read things. I'm going to read, I'm going to read, I plan to read this.
I forgot this. I don't want to.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read through this and be happy to answer any questions that you may have afterwards.
Just real quick, did you have a hard copy for us or no?
No.
Okay, do you mind emailing that to us later? I just, I like having the reports referenced.
Yeah, my notes. Yeah, I can do that.
Thanks.
All right. I wanted to follow up on, and report on activities regarding trustee David's statements and suggestions during the last meeting. I'm calling it a community inclusiveness update. That's the phrase I've come up with. It may change next month, but for now, that's what I'm calling it. Since the last library board meeting, I personally reviewed the books shared by trustee David. If you recall, she shared a bag of books with me that, appreciate you doing that. And definitely, I feel that all of them would be good to have in the library's collection if we do not already own them. I can tell you that I know that we own at least one copy of Michelle Obama's book, Becoming, as I selected that one myself during our Barnes &amp; Noble shopping trip in June. I then passed the books on to the assistant director, Jamie Lee Beck, and there it is on the floor. And asked for that, between she and Jackie Seacamp, our youth services librarian, that we check our catalog and then try to order all the titles that we do not already own if they are still in print and available. Unfortunately, things are not always available. Regarding any special programs to address the topics suggested by trustee David, I frankly have not had the time to think much about those possibilities, as all walk-in programs are still canceled until further notice. At this point, we as library staff have just been exploring and trying new approaches to programming in general, such as our pre-recorded storytimes, recently our front door grab-and-go programs, which I will elaborate on more in a few moments. And then just this last Friday, library staff convened for the first time since March because of COVID to talk as a full staff team and to brainstorm. Number one, our focus right now is looking at past programs that we've offered at the library and starting to brainstorm if there are ways that we might start offering them in new and creative virtual ways. And then number two, to start talking about any new general program ideas that we might consider starting. As a team, we're really, we are really just starting to grapple with getting back into more regular library programming now that we are more settled into what is, at least for now, the new normal. So that's my first bullet. The next item, a little more detail about the summer lunch program. This became a whirlwind of activity and effort on the part of all library staff, literally all library staff, from those who actually went to the nine lunch distribution sites, twice to each site, to those who covered the phones and front door services while others were at the sites, to those who ordered $5,000 worth of grant-funded activity and literacy promoting supplies, to those who ordered $15,000 worth of grant-funded high-quality, low-cost books from Scholastic, to those who stored books and stuffed activity bags to be taken to the sites. It was a monumental, true team effort that I salute all library staff members for, including the 14 interns that were recognized earlier tonight. Also, hats off to the state library staff members who worked for me repeatedly as we submitted and resubmitted and resubmitted plans and grant applications, and to key members of the Parks and Recreation Department staff who worked with us, worked with me to get the teen interns hired and the grant funds administered. An estimated 18,000 children, teens, and adults were touched or impacted through this year's summer lunch outreach program through the activity literacy grab-and-go bags and the free books that were distributed. This was a very positive and well-received library program, including the significant goodwill and bridge building between the library and key staff members in Palmdale School District. I can tell you that the two district staff members that I worked with in Palmdale School District were just ecstatic that we were even trying to do this, and then when we were able to work with them about it, it was actually they who arranged for the photo op with AV Press because they were so thrilled that we were able to do this with them. My next bullet, the summer reading program. While the number of participants was much less than prior years due to the coronavirus pandemic, we were actually happy with the amount of participation the library had, including 82 registered children, 23 registered teens, and 41 registered adults. Understood by the Friends of the Library, many prizes were awarded, participants in each of the age categories, ranging from fun toys picked up at the door, electronic gift cards emailed to patrons, and of course, a chance to be drawn for the opportunity to pilot the library director, the city manager, and the city communications manager in the face.
Do you have video footage of that?
We do have some photos. Yeah, actually, I thought, if you're interested, I can forward some pictures to you. The grand prize opportunity was held in front of the library on Friday, July 31, and much thanks and praise go to city manager JJ Murphy and city communications manager John Milner for being willing targets for several children, teens, and adults who were armed with cream pies provided by the library. And at the risk of being paid back later in some way, our illustrious Carrie Smith had agreed to join us, but she happened to be on vacation that week, so there's always next year. Still regarding summer reading program, Friday, July 31 was also the day of the library's end of summer reading program celebration, and the plan all along was to make it a Harry Potter themed occasion, as July 1 is Harry Potter's birthday in the books. Because of social distancing guidelines in place, youth services librarian Jackie Seacamp took the lead in planning the day's events, and it was decided to offer a grab-and-go happy birthday Harry Potter event. Bags for pickup were prepared in advance, including some nifty play magic wands, coloring and activity sheets, bookmarks, and Harry Potter themed toys. Anyone that came to the door that day would get a bag to take home as long as supplies last. We were excited to offer this program and believed it would attract some folks, but really didn't know how many to expect.
Just out of curiosity, Robert, what number birthday was it?
That, I don't know the math on that.
Yeah, but he's 10, isn't he? Everybody remember? Goes back a good ways. Not important, just curious.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm not going to help you on that. About 70 bags were prepared in advance. Well, that morning, we had families lining up at the door 15 minutes before we opened. Yours truly seems to always be looking for a reason to party and to dress up, and thanks to, thanks to a recent gift sent to me by family members of a Merlin the Wizard type costume, I designated myself as the official greeter, where I, wearing my facial covering, met attendees outside the front entrance to welcome, chat, and talk about the library services that are currently available, which many of them did not know about. The line extended to the parking lot and continued to do so for one and a half hours. Jamie Lee jumped in and became the primary magic librarian just inside the front door, who would ask how many bags were needed, and then she would disappear behind a giant white board backdrop that was wonderfully decorated by staff with various Harry Potter colored pictures and several storyline puppets and props, including a sorting hat, yes, we do have a sorting hat in the library, a stuffed snake and raven, and one of my favorites, a white owl. Because the turnout was so large, staff members Laura Jolz and Shay Hocken jumped into action and began making additional pickup bags, along with two of the interns who were helping that day. Over 200 bags were distributed in those first 90 minutes, with more distributed throughout the day as well. It was very well received with many expressions of thanks offered by the family members who attended. We as staff definitely learned that there is a market for and high level of interest in grab-and-go programs at the front door, and we were beginning to plan some other similar programs for the coming months. And yes, I would say at least one-third of the children who came that morning were also dressed in various wizardry attire. It definitely still felt like a party, COVID-19 style. Next bullet. One other outreach event I would like to report on occurred this last Saturday near the LA Care office on Palmdale Boulevard. LA Care has offered a free backpack event each August for several years, and the library has traditionally participated with our Tecmobile slash No Mobile minivan. This year, because of COVID-19, the library was invited, and we attended to help distribute the free backpacks, as well as free Scholastic books that we still had left over and information about library services. Staff member Ricardo and I represented the library, and about 1,800 children and adults received the materials and resources that were distributed in a grab-and-go drive-through arrangement in the LA Care parking lot from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon on Saturday, August 8. And finally, I'm happy to announce that beginning on Saturday, August 8, staff members are now scheduled to be in the building and expand our phone reference and front door pickup services to include... and expand our phone reference and front door pickup services to include Saturdays moving forward. That is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great questions.
How many other bags did you have originally? You said you passed out two hundred, and then you had a lot more than you thought. What had you originally prepared for?
I think we had about seventy, is what I wrote down.
Uh, the, so the week of, we were still prepping the materials and crafts and activities. And then all the way up until Thursday, or Friday, we had actually started putting the bags together. So we had about seventy that were already prepared to be handed out. I would say that lasted like fifteen minutes. Um, so when he said that Shay and Laura and the interns jumped in, like, it was, we opened the door and they were already putting more bags together. And I, we started running really, really low, close to, like, we started at ten. I would say we started running really, really low at 10:45. Uh, it was two hundred bags prepared. Um, and then we kind of started throwing them together with leftover bookmarks and coloring pages, just like anything we could throw in there. And we ran out of coloring pages and bookmarks, like Robert said shortly, you know, after the hour. And so it was, it was more than two hundred bags, but, yeah, yeah, it was.
So, so we're in a lot, we'll, we'll have at least two hundred in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
All ages are seeking to escape our imprisonment.
Yes. Yeah.
What was the name of the inclusivity initiative that you had mentioned?
I call that Community Inclusiveness.
Update.
Community Inclusiveness Update, that's what I called it.
I like that. I appreciate that. Um, I had a couple of comments on your report. One, I just wanted to thank you, Jamie Lee, for the pamphlet that you put together. It was beautifully done. I appreciated the balance that you put into it to encourage democratic conversation and multiple perspectives. Um, it was a very professional-looking pamphlet. I've been showing it off and sharing it. Um, I also wanted to, um, commend you for furthering that discussion and, um, looking at those books, ordering them, taking that seriously, because it doesn't just matter to me, it matters to our community, to our kids, to, um, to our community, to our patrons. Um, the summer lunch program, huge. Thanks. I was like, I was looking for one of them to read to my students today, and I was like, oh, I think it's in the bag. Um, but the summer lunch program, since I've been serving on the board, I'm just amazed by what you guys do for the community. Um, I have friends that work for Palmdale School District, and they can attest to the impact it's had on their kids over summer. So thank you guys, um, again, from the bottom of my heart. Um, it, it's really encouraging thinking about what you said about looking at new approaches to programming and how to virtualize things, especially because COVID isn't going away anytime soon. So I think just the success of that and the excitement over it kind of shows that, hey, that's something we can even recreate, not just for summer lunch program, but for, um, other events that are coming up, other seasons that are coming up. Um, and if there's any way that, um, as a board member that I can contribute to that, as a volunteer safely, um, coming in behind the scenes and helping organize or stuff bags, or even just donating money to have more resources and stuff, I'm more than happy to, to contribute. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If I may comment on your last comment?
Yeah.
Actually, it kind of reminds me of something I thought about saying as part of Director Smith's report. You know, one of the primary roles that you all play is that of advocacy. And, uh, and granted with COVID-19, our opportunities aren't as many, uh, but I want you to know that I would welcome one or any of you to attend library programs, to, to get up and say something a- as a library board member, to advocate for libraries, for library services. And in fact, once we get through this social distancing thing, whenever that may be, excuse me, this little exercise of focusing more on trustee responsibilities has got me thinking about possible, I don't want to scare any of you off, off the doors. But like a speaking circuit of library trustees, I mean, just on a regular basis to, to go around to civic groups, uh, anyone that'll have us. I, I do that already.
That would be number nine, and our trustee competency is lobbying.
Yeah. And I, I would love to take one or two of you to some of these. For example, back before COVID, I was, started going to Rotary meetings and chamber meetings to talk about library services. And what a great effect it would have if, if one of you came with me to an opportunity like that. And so based on what you just said, trustee David, you may get invited to some things.
Oh, well, I just also wanted to add, just as the, the importance of lobbying, uh, one of the patrons.
Thank you.
Um, just as a,
just as a testament to the importance of lobbying and even just the interpersonal communication, um, at the library yesterday, I had a patron say that she didn't know that we were doing the pickup service. She didn't know that we were doing phone reference. And the only way that she found out is because her neighbor is also an avid reader, and she was talking about how, oh, I've read everything in my house at this point, and I could just use some new books. I wish the library was open. And her friend was telling her, you, they are, like, I've been picking up books this whole time. Do you need me to pick them up for you, or you know, you can call them? Um, and as much as we try to get things out there, it's really people that we can't, you know, share social media stuff with, aren't using the library right now, that are having trouble finding out about the things that we are doing. Um, so going to Rotary clubs, talking to your neighbors, sharing pamphlets, that's a very important part of how to let people in the community know what we're doing and that we're available.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Give that woman a mic any time. Okay, thank, thank you. Any, any other questions or comments about our report?
Okay, thank you very much, Robert. That was, that was a great report. Any staff comments? Staff? F? No? Okay. Any trustee comments that we wanted to hear right now?
Real quick. My comment is to you, Robert. I am retiring from my, um, professional job September 30th. And my, but I'm not ready to sit down, cause I'm just getting started. And I'm wanting to really get back to my original love, which is community activism. So, um, September 30th is, uh, my last workday. I'll probably take maybe thirty days to kind of rest up, get my battery recharged. But I'll be ready November 1st.
Dancing in September? Congratulations.
You realize this is on our public record now, so, uh.
Of course.
Right, thank you.
I, I'd like to make a comment or two, if I may. Um, I, I really want to thank again Carrie Smith for the, uh, report and, and all the work that went into it. Um, I, I understand the report to say that, um, the library board really can talk about most anything that pertains to the library itself. We can discuss all sorts of matters about policy and, uh, programs and whatnot. You know, whether we, they act, and they get acted upon is another question, but for the most part, we can really discuss most anything. And I, and I don't want to let go, um, a couple of tabled items. I just want to make note that these items are tabled. One is the library fees and fines, uh, policy. So we'll, we'll come back to that and understand that, that it's a little complicated because it involves money and, and it involves city council weighing in on that. And then, and the other one is, is the Community Inclusivity Initiative, which I, I do want to get back to. I think it's a really important point. And, um, and I look forward to further discussing that once we get a little more clarity on the role of the board and the board members. Uh, Robert, did you want to reply?
I was just gonna say, the fees and fees, we'll, we'll be back on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, just want to make note that we have, we're not gonna let go of that quite yet. Uh, okay, so those are the two things I wanted to say. Um, other, uh, comments from our trustees?
I do have a comment, but, um, before I comment it, I wanted to know if there's a time limit on comments. It's a little longer than the previous comments. It's not a half-hour speech, but it is, you know me.
Um, I would say that, uh, as brief as you can keep it.
Okay. I'll try and condense some of it. Um, am I allowed, uh, without violating a Brown Act, am I allowed to email my full commentary to the board? Or is that a violation because it's in writing and it's involving everyone? And it's not on public record? A violation. That's what I thought. So, okay, I'll try and keep it brief, but I just wanted to address last time because I felt filibustered. Um, and I knew I was, was within my parameters and roles as a library trustee, so I still wanted to touch on some of those things and really draw back to, one, our competencies and roles as library trustees. And secondly, um, specific data that's pulled right from our survey and our patrons. I wanted to s- to really push how coincided that was, and that it wasn't just a personal agenda that I was pushing. Um, because I do believe in being a public servant, um, and representing the needs of the community. Um, so according to the customer survey from 2019, I don't know if you guys still have a copy of that, but approximately seven percent of the patrons mentioned outdated materials or materials they wanted not being available. Um, several comments in that survey had mentioned outdated materials, a small collection, the library not having what they wanted, seeking materials from other libraries, et cetera. Um, that need was expressed, um, by our patrons, and our library staff have actively been seeking to remedy that by appropriating funding and grant monies to increase our collection, both our hard collection and our, um, digital collection to reflect customer requests. I've seen us partner with other library systems and online servers. Um, in the categories of personal and book collections, um, on a scale of one to five, both the categories of, um, let's see, uh, needing personal and school research needs and the category of the rating of the book collection were a four out of five. Uh, connecting the national demand for current top sellers being sought out online and in libraries is absolutely a reflection of our patrons' needs. Um, furthermore, seventy-five percent of our patrons who took the survey reported that they had not attended Storytime, Educational Arts, or Enrichment events in the past year. Um, from discussions that I've had with the community during this tumultuous time in our nation and community's history, our Black community has expressed an interest in more diverse and representative programming coming from the city, which would include the library. Specifically, um, the acknowledgement of Black holidays like Kwanzaa and Juneteenth were offered as possibilities last meeting. There are many community members that expressed interest to help host events, um, whenever those are possible, of course, um, to honor the heritage and culture of our constituents. Um, I do recognize that there are efforts being made by the library. I don't want to downplay that at all. I do see the inclusivity efforts here. But of course, there's always more work to do. Um, like, for example, we have an African-American book club, but are there storytimes consistently featuring Black children outside of Black History Month? Um, on the survey, comment line forty-three on page nineteen of the survey had a patron explicitly say, "Any diversity would be great." Line fifty-four stated, "More diverse cultural programs." Line one oh eight stated, "More newly released and not in bestseller nonfiction books." These are our patrons mentioning these, these programming and needs. These are important conversations to have as library board members. And the discussion on last month's agenda, when I put it there, was not made for decision-making or voting. It was solely to express possible actions the library could take to have a public stance on racial justice issues and how they affect our patrons. Sixty-one percent of our patrons asked for an increased ebook access through services like Hoopla. And at the last meeting, I brought in evidence of the lack of ebook availability for our patrons for some of the nation's most sought-after books. Um, in the book that we were given by the library from the city of Palmdale upon appointment, um, tip sheet number one speaks to the role of library trustees. Number two says, "We're an advisory board. I agree with trustee Manning." Um, that is why I advised the, um, suggestions that I made. And we'll come back to that. Number three says, um, that we have the authority for developing and implementing the policies that govern library services. That could potentially address issues of diversity and inclusion in new collection materials and programming for the public. Number four says that we will work with the library administration and planning and goal-setting. All goal-setting should and must include a cultural lens. The board should absolutely be participating in public discussions that ensure that future plans and goals are inclusive and honoring the diverse community we serve. Tip sheet number nine speaks to our competencies. Number five on that tip sheet says that we will, uh, work with the director to develop a long-range plan for the library with input from staff as citizens, as well as involvement from community-based leaders. Um, not only was my discussion last month based on information from patrons, um, commenting on last year's survey, but also from personal involvement in recent community events, like rallies and protests for racial justice in the Antelope Valley and the Los Angeles community, many of which Mayor Hoffbauer attended. Um, community-based leaders are calling for restructuring organizations to be more diverse, more inclusive, and racially just. That would include the city library. If you're only seeking input from community-based leaders that look like you, that think like you, that represent your own culture and background and belief system, you're not being an inclusive member of the community. Number nine asks about lobbying, which, um, was commented on earlier, um, telling people how they can help libraries. Every single suggestion that was made on last month's agenda was discussed with local leaders for input and suggestions before I brought it to the board for discussion and consideration. On tip sheet number eleven, the Golden Rules for Board Numbers, number three states, that we have an opportunity for courageous and forward-thinking efforts to push the library ahead. Having discussions on racial justice is absolutely uncomfortable and contentious. Um, and maybe when you're not affected directly by racism and have no real idea what it's like to live under oppression, it can be difficult. I would again challenge all of the non-Black board members to dig into the work of anti-racism and to understand how we can use our privilege and our platform to propel the needs of our community to a more just and equitable place. We have to engage in these conversations, and be forward-thinking in a time like this means making sincere efforts to become more diverse and inclusive in all of our services and programming. Wrapping up, number eleven says, "We need to know the needs of the library and the community." Again, every item that was brought, um, to suggestion was absolutely emailed to, um, community leaders and groups that were, um, expressing these needs and asked for input. A lot of those suggestions came from those community leaders. This is why our conversation must continue, and our community's needs must be addressed and met. Um, lastly, this, um, tip sheet number twelve talks about us having a responsibility to speak our mind and to argue forcibly our point of view within the form of the board. And I know that I'm being long-winded, but I cannot have enough words to propel these issues that are too long, going unspoken about. And I'm going to forcibly argue them. I'm going to continue to advocate for them. I'm going to continue to request that they're placed on the agenda. Um, I'm not gonna let that go, because the justice issues are real. Um, my students are affected by them, my children are affected by them, my family's affected by them, my community's affected by them. So I just wanted to comment on that, because it was painful for me personally last meeting to feel filibustered and shut down by using a process to shut down an important discussion that needs to happen. Um, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for that. That was carefully thought through and, and well-delivered. Thank you very much. Other trustee comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment too. Um, one of the things that, that we spoke about last week was the, you know, how we select the materials and, and how that's done. And we don't know how things are, are done. And I know, uh, one of the comments I made last week is, is just, uh, maybe refining the process on how we choose the books. Um, for example, um, you know, using community input, trying to find, uh, people from different ages, races, kind of as an advisory committee when, when books are ordered to maybe fill in those areas where, where we don't, uh, we don't have the, the materials that our community really wants and, and needs right now. You know, I think that when we talk about activism, I was born in 1952, and I grew up in San Francisco. Um, and I was part of a lot of protest meetings and have been a victim of extreme discrimination as a woman, as an educated woman in my lifetime. Unbelievable discrimination, which was not against the law and was actually done a lot of times publicly to me. That was humiliating. So, you know, having been through those kinds of, of times where I felt, well, that's why I have a voice now. Because when you, when those things happen to you, um, and you have a dad standing behind you saying, "You can do it. Every other guy does." Um, you know, y- y- it, it gives you strength and, and, and those types of things. And I think just, you know, one of the most important things about our library is, as you say, is, is really meeting the needs of our community. And so having that community voice and choosing the materials when we do that, when we go through buying, um, it might be something we might want to visit. Is, you know, young people involved, um, you know, different community groups that we have that, you know, that have a specific need. I think that might go a long way if we have that discussion down the road about, you know, be, bringing more voices into the choice of books and, and things like that. Might, might be a direction that we could look at in, in the future, is, is doing things along those lines.
Thank you. Other trustee comments?
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay. Um, a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of interesting conversations in the future. Thank you for all that. Uh, if there are no more comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting now at six thirty-nine.
Nice job.
Everyone?